Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting the Manitou Springs City Council to order. This is March the 22nd. This is a work session meeting. I would like to explain to the audience that we had anticipated taking a council member group photograph at a quarter of six, but we're lacking Mayor Protam Shada. So I think what we'll do, we'll go ahead and proceed with the first agenda item. Hopefully, Mr. Shada will join us during that time. And then we'll take a break between the first and second agenda items. We'll do the photo and then come back for the second item. That said, we'll do the roll call. Counselor Wilderholt?
Present.
Counselor Chandler?
Present.
Counselor Fortune?
Present.
Counselor Wolf?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
And the mayor is also present. Mr. Shada's absent. Hopefully, we'll see him in a little bit. All right. Our first item tonight, discussion item, is discussion regarding Resolution Number 1521 Carnegie Library. This was a resolution that City Council passed last November the 2nd. There was some concern by council members who wanted to revisit it. Counselor Chandler, I think you were one of the ones who called for it, so I would give you the floor to start off with.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see so many people in the House. I just want to say before I speak that I am in favor of the library being remodeled and being ADA compliant, and I look forward to not holding up the process any longer than we have to. I will tell you my concerns about Resolution 1521, and it may take me a minute or so. By that time, maybe Counselor Shada will join us. So Resolution 1521, which was voted on November 2nd, a resolution to approve the conceptual design for the historical Carnegie Library building expansion located at 701 Manitou Avenue, Manitou Springs, Colorado. So on the evening of November 2nd, prior to casting my vote, I asked a question. I asked a question about, is this the final design? Is this a conceptual design or a final design? Is there going to be more community input on the design itself? And prior to casting my vote, I was reassured that there was going to be continued community engagement on the design itself. I was pleased to have coffee with a member of the Carnegie Task Force about a week after that, and congratulated this person on how far we've come from the original designs, and that while I felt like we still had a little bit to go, that we were getting really closer to what I thought was an outstanding final design. And this individual said, oh, no, no, no. No, it's done. You voted on the design. It's it. We're done. And I said, well, that wasn't my understanding, so I see that we have a little bit of a misunderstanding going on. So I then, after talking to this individual, who told me that council had voted on Resolution 1521, which basically cemented the footprint of the library design. And I thought, you know, I don't recall seeing that language, "final" or "footprint." And then some other terminology, Phase 1 and Phase 2 started coming up. And it was my understanding that February 23rd and the 24th were going to be continued opportunities to talk about the design itself. So I thought, well, am I an N of 1, or do I need to gather some more information? So I went home and I read the resolution again, not finding any of that language in there. I did make several phone calls, including to a few council members, and said, you know, walk me and talk me through what you felt like you voted for. And I got more than one answer. And then I thought, well, maybe I need to look up the words "final" and "concept" and "conceptual" in the dictionary to inform myself about the terminology. And one of the things that I've learned along the way is perhaps in the future, we need to start putting those definitions into our resolutions and ordinances so that there isn't that confusion. So anyway, I went out and I talked to several community members, and there was a real divide on what it was that happened this evening. And so I was concerned enough to bring it back and say, you know, I did not personally vote on the conceptual design as the final design. And I did attend both the February 23rd and the 24th Zoom and in-person meetings, and there were many community members that were of the impression that those meetings were to continue to talk about the design itself, not the interior design. That is not what the city website said. It said the design. And so I'm concerned that we need to all be speaking the same language and coming from the same shared understanding of what it is that we are voting for or against. So whether you voted for or against it is not why I'm here, and I'm not here to discuss the design at all. I'm just talking process. So when I attended the 23rd and the 24th meetings, I heard the architect use the word "final design," further confusing me, especially since we had a community group that brought another conceptual idea to the table that I thought was worth vetting, and still think so. And so I can only speak for myself. That is my understanding. I was not the only one. There's many community members that were confused about the language. And so for me personally, if my yes vote means that I voted for the ratio design as presented as the final design, I will have to rescind my vote. So that's it in a nutshell for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I might mention, my understanding is that, I mean, it's very unusual to go back and to redo a resolution, and I think we encounter a certain degree of legal problems. More typically, I think what governments do is they would adopt a new resolution if it came down to that. So I think the idea of rescinding a vote is perhaps not quite the sentiment we'd be looking for here. That said, do we have other comments, Julie?
Thank you. I agree with everything that Judith Chandler just said. I want to add to it a little bit so that I don't take up unnecessary time repeating the same information. I want to note that as much as I'd like to think that this was an innocent ambiguity between the layperson terminology, the layperson definition of the word conceptual versus some technical definition, if we were to review the actual transcript of that portion of the hearing, I don't mean the minutes, but the word-for-word transcript, at least three of us on council sought specific and individual confirmation. This isn't the final design. I'm not happy with this as a final design. I think we're 95% there. Oh, yeah, no problem. Conceptual. It's conceptual. Do you see? We added the word conceptual and confirmed that several times. So now to be told that, oh, conceptual is a special word. We weren't using the later Oxford Dictionary definition. We were using some technical building definition, so it's too late. I don't accept that. I don't think that's right. So I don't really care if we rescind. I don't think there's a problem with rescinding a resolution because a resolution is not legally binding. It's just a "here's how we feel today" kind of comment. It's not an ordinance. It's not a law. But whether we rescind or not, or do a new one or not, my position is that I did not vote for what I thought I voted for, and I was essentially misled, intentionally misled. And I don't appreciate that whatsoever. I also want to comment that--
Excuse me, Julie. Who would you say intentionally misled you?
When we were at that meeting on November 4th, I was told several times by the group that, oh, no, the word conceptual means this. I don't know if it was you, Mayor Graham, or if it was whoever was presenting this to that day, or if it was Rob Danin. I don't recall. I'd have to go back to the November 4th meeting. Okay? I'm just saying that when there was a lot of back and forth, we're going to have more meetings to discuss this design, aren't we? It's not final yet. That's right. We have two more meetings to discuss the design. It's not final. Don't you see the word conceptual in here? Don't you know what conceptual is? It's the idea. It's a concept. It's not a final draft. Okay, I voted for it. And then I was told, oh, it's before HPC on April 5th. We're pushing this right through. I don't accept that. I also want to point out that I don't want to hear about, oh, we've been working on this for so many years that if we have a 60-day delay, the sky's going to fall, and we're all going to have, you know, a historical fit. No, this is a very expensive and a very important project that will be around longer than any of us will be alive, and I want to make sure it's right. And I feel that since there is an alternate design that's 95% the same, but has some important differences, it's curious to me that there's so much fear about what would happen if the community and HPC and, God forbid, council gets to see the alternate design drafted in an architect form, just as the original design is before us. No, this has been going long enough that no one's going to die if we put it on hold so that we can get a second design, the second model, designed in an architectural design on a piece of paper, so that we can fairly have the public, and then HPC, and then City Council compare and contrast and vote and decide. That's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we're kind of in a little bit of an awkward situation tonight because the council voted to discuss the resolution, to discuss the second item, collection development for the library, but not to discuss the building. And I really don't know how we separate the building from the resolution, but I did find out, and I think this is worth mentioning, that on Sunday, proponents of both sides met and had a discussion, and I think they were able to resolve some difficulties. I did receive notes on that this afternoon. I forwarded them to council this afternoon after I got them, so I don't know if council members had a chance to look at that or be aware of it, but I want to call that your attention.
Well, thank you. Now, I have not checked my emails since around 1:00 this afternoon, unfortunately. And I will say that even if there is one or two or three or four or five people in this community of 5,000 who have said, oh, we worked something out, that doesn't change my mind whatsoever. I still am the opinion, and I'm still here to represent my constituents and all of the many people who have emailed and called and texted me and us, that they want a fair shake for their design to be reviewed, drawn up, reviewed, and compared against the design that the Denver architect prepared.
That might be fair if they were willing to pay for the additional design or help raise money to pay for it.
Well, I guess that's up to us to decide. We haven't voted on that yet.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments from council? Nancy?
Thank you. I, of course, have a different perspective. I'm very comfortable with the resolution as it stands. I found it very clear that night that it still had to go to the Historic Preservation Commission, and so there's a whole process that it still needed to go through, which entails more community engagement. So I don't have the same reservations as others. So my recommendation is strongly to let the process continue. A mantra of mine is to trust the process, and I think it's been a good process to date, and I would like to see it continue on track and on schedule. So let it go to the HPC. I'm not sure why it took five months post the resolution to raise some of these concerns. I'm also a proponent of working, as I said, within the existing process and don't set up parallel processes. I think that the task force, my sense has been that they've been very open to working with anyone who wants to bring suggestions, and I think we saw that again this weekend when they met with the group that was bringing additional suggestions. I'm also a little concerned because when it does go to the Historic Preservation Commission, that's quasi-judicial, so I think we have to be very cautious as a council to engage on those issues themselves. The task force needs actions on our part in order to move this process forward. So I saw the resolution as one, as I said the other day, a stake in the ground, and we move forward and not backwards. So I'm not a proponent for changing the resolution. I could go on and look at other guidance. If we wanted to give the task force other guidance, I'm okay with that via a resolution. And lastly, I would say that the task force works, you know, agreed basically to work for council. They have done everything that we've asked them to do and have done an awful lot of work. And, you know, I've been in a position where I've been asked to do something, and then my boss or a colleague would do it instead of me or tell me to stop doing it or something. It's incredibly demoralizing to have that happen. So as I said on Sunday at our retreat, I'm very, very, very concerned about how we treat our, both our staff and our volunteer workforce out there. So that's my recommendation, strong recommendation, is to leave the resolution in place. Let the parties out there at the grassroots level continue to discuss. You know, the email that you sent today, Mayor, I think, was a step, absolutely a good step, and a helpful and a productive and a rejoining step. So I don't want to make any changes with the process and let it go to the HPC and let the groups continue to work it at their level within the process that we established for the task force to be the lead on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith, you've spoken, and we'll get back to you. Natalie, you haven't spoken, so why don't you speak now?
Mayor, may I interrupt? We have no audio. Could we take a five-minute break? We're trying to fix it right now, but just so people from home could hear us, we have no audio right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Five-minute break then. I guess we'll expect you to speak loudly when you speak, okay? So does it look like we're good to go now? Okay, let's go ahead. See where we are. Natalie, you were about to take the floor.
Okay. So, yeah, I think this is a great conversation to have. I think you're right. We need clarity around the definitions and the process so that there's less confusion. And I think we've already discussed the ideas we move forward in the future with other projects, that we do have a better kind of understanding of this so that this kind of situation doesn't end up kind of happening again. But I feel like, that being said, like, everybody's working so hard behind the scenes, as Nancy said, grassroots-style to fix this and make sure everyone feels like the process is working. And I feel like we're back on track. I think it's great. I don't feel like we need to update the resolution. I'm really excited to see how things move forward, and I just love that, I think, the community has worked together to figure out the problem without us, which I just keep thinking that the more we get out of the way, the better things kind of work out around here. So I don't know. I just wanted to say that, so, thanks.
Great. Thanks, Natalie. Michelle?
I don't have a comment either way, as I did not vote on Resolution 1521.
You would like to not vote on it?
All right. Well, since you had voted on it this last November, so I don't have any comment either way.
Okay. Great. And just for the benefit of the public, Michelle was not a member of City Council at that time. Okay? Although the rest of City Council, we were seated at that time, so six of us voted for it, or six voted on the matter, put it that way. Okay. Okay. From my perspective, I feel like things were pretty clear back in November. I think, you know, I feel like I knew what I was voting for in revisiting, going back and through the materials. I don't think that there was confusion. Yeah, I did work in an engineering environment for 20 years, and so it was pretty normal for me to see things being approved incrementally. And if, by analogy, on a house, you know, you would do the foundation first, and then you do the first floor and the second floor and keep adding, and each time go through perhaps some sort of evaluation. That's a bit of an analogy. Certainly, in the engineering environment, we were constantly, you know, approving things in three- to four-month blocks of work so that we could push forward, and that was pretty normal. So to me, in an engineering or an architectural environment, this seems like a very rational process. It allows you to do design work and then firm it up and gradually work towards a solution. So I think the process worked then. I feel like it was valid. I don't think we need to go back and revisit the resolution. I'm happy with it. I do think, as a pragmatic point where we're at now, we've had, basically, it seems like two schools of thought, the library task force and then the, I'll call it the Tina Risteter conceptual approach. And on Sunday, people sat down, and I think probably we're a lot closer than we were, I should say they are. So I think, the thing is, it seemed like we're very close to having a solution. We're very close to making a touchdown, and I prefer that we not mess it up. I think the community has done some grassroots things. It's admirable, and I think there's a lot of virtue in that. I do see danger in procrastinating and going back and try to dramatically revise things, so I am not in favor of revision at this point. Going forward, there's still wiggle room for a lot of things. It has to go through, I think there's two flavors of HPC, both an interior and exterior approval. It has to go to Planning Commission. There is some time for some tweaking. We did, and again, going back to what we did on November 2nd, that was the footprint, you know, the foundation, and it's major structural work, so I don't make light of that. We did make a decision on that. Those are principally my thoughts. So I think at this point, we have Julie and Judith leaning towards a revision of the resolution, going back. I think Nancy, Natalie, and myself would push forward. Not sure where John's at. As a practical thing, do we really want to entertain this when we could push forward and, you know, work that design? You know, the work that was done on Sunday between the task force and Tina and her group, if we're close there, I would think that might be a solution. Judith, please.
So what I would just like to reiterate, and the reason why I brought this forward again to discuss, isn't about the design. And by the way, I'm just finding out right now, as I sit here, that people got in a room and tried to hash things out. I was at a retreat all day Sunday, a council retreat, so I can't wait for that information to actually see the light of day. I'd like to see it. So what I would like us to do, and what I intend to do going forward as a responsible City Council member, is I must have definitions of terms going forward. If there's any term, that there's any question, there might be a dual meaning. As Mayor said, and one of our architect residents sent an email to council saying, yes, in architecture parlance, concept means something else. Well, as a council member, I don't know that. So I think that's really important. On Sunday, we talked a lot about diversity and having a diverse, vibrant community, and I'm all for that. And the more we diversify our community, the more important it is to have the same language, that we have the same shared meaning of the language that we're talking about because we might, well, hopefully, we'll attract people that may speak another language or have a different shared meaning. So I think we need to be very careful about that. I do, will say one more time, I do want to go on record as saying that I voted for the conceptual drawing under the understanding that night that there would be more discussion on the design itself, not the interior design, not, you know, paint swatches and fabric, and not, you know, whether we're going to paint dinosaurs on that wall, but the actual design. And I do think that that's really worthy to think about when we're having these community discussions that bring us together about these things. I want to say one last thing about the library. The other reason I'm being so picky about this is this is the Carnegie Library. Once we do this, it cannot be undone. And so I just want to make sure we look at everybody's bright idea. I agree, there's a stake in the ground, but there's not a shovel. And until there is, I want to entertain any idea that anybody takes hundreds of hours to develop and bring forward that we need to look at. And at a time when, you know, Colorado Springs may be putting on their ballot, legalizing recreational marijuana, I'll use John Shada's, we need to sharpen our pencils and make sure that not only do we have a library design that preserves the Carnegie Museum as much as we, or the Carnegie Library as much as we possibly can, that is cost-effective and protects us no matter what might happen down the road with our relationships with PPLD and others. I'm going to say one more thing. We got a wonderful email from Annie Schmidt and Farley McDonough, and I was reminded in that email that we don't have to rush because, guess what? We currently have a PPLD-run, ADA-compliant library in our town, and it happens to be at the MAC. And because it's at the MAC, we have been able to, you know, increase the opportunities at the MAC, and I do believe we're now the second-largest work space, maker space in the state. So we don't, you know, we're okay, we can hit the pause button for a few moments to get everybody at the table. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? I guess, in your response to a couple of Counselor Chandler's remarks, I think the task force has made a really strong effort to engage the public and to be available, and I think probably an additional testimony to that is what happened on Sunday to get people together. I think we're probably close. It seems to me like one of the themes we had at our retreat on Sunday was the importance of engagement, of giving people an opportunity to weigh in, and I think the task force has really bent over backwards in large measure. And I think it's a model for what we could do in the future as to how we do public engagement. I am concerned, though, that we go on forever, that we, you know, at some point between the time when we've, you know, come up with the design and put in the shovel in the ground, we have to say, we're done. We're done with talking. We're done with the blueprints. We're going to turn some dirt, pour some concrete, we're going to build a place that we're proud of. And 25 years from now, we will not have a City Council here sitting and trying to figure out what to do with the library because we'll have done a good job on it. And actually, I'd like that to be a lot sooner than 25 years. A year or two from now would be great, in my mind. So I'm inclined to leave the resolution where it is. I think we can continue to work through the process. Again, it's going to go to HPC a couple of times for an interior and an exterior evaluation and a planning. So at this point, it looks like we're roughly, well, we've got Michelle standing out. I think we have three in favor of leaving the resolution where it's at, and--
Well, we can't vote today, anyway.
No, I know we can't, but I think, you know, and voting is one thing and making progress is another. I'd like to think that a lot of times are the same thing, but Julie, I'm trying to think, can we all leave this room tonight and feel like we're making progress and we're doing the right thing? So, sure, yeah. Nancy?
Just for clarification, Counselor Chandler, I'm hearing you say that, I think I'm hearing you say that you would be okay with this resolution if in the future we are more cautious with, to ensure that there are no misunderstandings in our resolutions. So write resolutions with more clarity.
That is not correct. I am not satisfied with this resolution as it was written, the language that was used and the way that it was presented to council when many-- many council members asked specific questions about exactly what we were voting for. We got reassurances about what we were voting for, which is why I voted yes. So, that, that is specifically why I want to go on record as saying that, that I am a no vote on the ratio design being the final design. So, this is just a discussion tonight. That is where I stand.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. I think then that the, that our sentiment now is that we'll just leave the resolution in place. We'll continue to work through the process. And we're, I would like to think that we're, we're back on track.
Unless and until there's a motion brought forward to the contrary, I would agree with what you said.
Okay. Thank you. And, okay, I, I think that, that's good clarification. Okay, if there's no further discussion, Council, will you take a short break, or we could go right on to the next item? Any druthers? Let's go on. We've got a, a number of people here, and they'd probably like to get home before the snow falls. So, without further ado, let's go on to the discussion item C2, Pike's Peak Library District Collection Development Policy Discussion. And I think there was a, a number of questions that we had. Fortunately, fortunately tonight, we have John Spears from the Pike's Peak, Pike's Peak Library District. John, maybe if you could come up and give us a little overview, bring us up to date on things, and then we'd like, I think we may, we have some questions we'd like to ask you, and we can take the discussion from there. And, and John, name, name and address, usual routine.
John Spears, and 321 Santa Fe Place, Manitou Springs, Colorado, 80829. I'm the Chief Librarian and CEO of the Pike's Peak Library District. So, without knowing the exact context of having a library policy on, as a discussion item for a city council, I'm, I'm going to kind of guess what this is about. And what I can say is that there has been a lot reported in the media recently regarding two appointments to the, to the Library District Board of Trustees. Those were contentious for a few reasons. The main reason that they were contentious had to do with the fact that we had a sitting board member, the Board President Wayne Van Der Scher, who sought reappointment. And for the first time in the history of the Pike's Peak Library District, we had a sitting board member who was not reappointed. One of the people who was appointed, that there was two vacancies, one was his, another one was someone who was termed off. So, that one did have to be someone, someone different. One of the candidates, a man named Aaron Salt, who currently also serves on the District 20 School Board, he was recently elected to that, made statements to the media and at city council, that he wanted to ensure that age-appropriate materials were in the children's collection. And he also sought the creation of a portal that would allow parents to blacklist and whitelist various materials for their children. The portal is not something that is, would, is, that, as a library district, that we would really consider, because it does violate our policy, our collection development policy. It also violates a lot of the precepts of librarianship, which is basically that a library is not there to be an intermediary between a parent and a child. The only appropriate filter is a parent. It's not the library. Regarding his statements on the children's materials, what he was talking about was ensuring that the materials that were in the children's collection were age-appropriate. He was not necessarily suggesting that they be completely removed from the library. So, at our last board meeting, we went through our collection development policy. It was a policy that was actually supposed to be reviewed several months ago. However, when we became aware that Aaron Salt was going to be one of the board members, and this process was a difficult one for the library and for city council. The city council actually did not vote to put on Aaron Salt or Aaron Benz initially. The vote failed. What happened then was that Councilmember Skorman retired, and a new council member was sworn in, in his place, Stephanie Finley-Fortune. So, that flipped the vote, and that was when Aaron Benz and Aaron Salt were actually appointed to the board. We did not want to appear that we were rushing through the collection development policy, since it was such an, since it had become a bit of a discussion item. And so, we held off until Aaron Salt was seated. He also took a seat on our Internal Affairs Committee that reviews policies such as the collection development policy. When the policy was reviewed, Aaron made no changes to it, other than one that we actually really agreed with, where he clarified some language. It then passed, and I believe that several of you were at the meeting. I know that there were some issues with sound, and I apologize for that. We are working on it. But it went, it would pass without a hitch. Actually, all three of our policies that directly touch on the First Amendment were done at that meeting. Also, our meeting room policy and our filming and photography policy were also up for review. All three of them passed with, with no changes. It is our, and, and I'm speaking on behalf of the leadership team and the Board of Trustees. There have been many people on the Board of Trustees throughout, since the district formed in 1960, that have been seen as extremely conservative. Kathleen Owings, John Borenstein, John Wilson, Ken Beach, Scott Taylor. These are all people, avowed, very conservative people. We also have many liberals on the board as well. Dora Gonzalez. Well, we actually have fewer. But there are others as well. There's a lot to why I'm leaving.
You were specifically quoted in the paper, unless you think it was a misquote, several times. And, and the point of your quote was, "I'm leaving in large part because I do not want to have to fight against the reduction in freedom of information, and the, and the direction in which this library board is apparently going." I realize that you're in a very uncomfortable position today, and I do not envy you, because you're still on the record, you're here on behalf of PPLD, not on behalf of yourself and your individual capacity. And I understand that as a PPLD representative tonight, you are here to represent what PPLD wants you to say, as their representative. So, I appreciate that. But when you were quoted in your individual capacity about why you were leaving, it was quite clear that you don't want any part of this movement toward book banning, and censorship, and portals, and all that stuff. I realize we don't know how it's all gonna shake out and come down, but I, I did want to point out that your role tonight, I assume, is not as a resident of Manitou, but it's in your capacity with PPLD. Is that correct?
It, it is. And actually, the article...
I'll stop talking, John.
I was quoted as saying that I am against the politicization of the board. That was my statement. The statement regarding intellectual freedom also touched on the school districts, and what is happening in general in this community. When it came to the library board, my specific statement was the politicization of the library board and the process. I was very careful to actually say that I had nothing against the two people themselves, Aaron Salt and Aaron Benz. Yes, I said that intellectual freedom is under threat in this community. I did say that. But it was not specifically about the library. It was about this community. And the context of that was also relating back to what happened in Colorado Springs in the 1990s, which I was not here for. But as a gay individual, I definitely found out about when I moved here. And I was told what this community was. My fear, and now I am speaking as John Spears and a resident of Manitou, I fear for this community. I do. I do not fear for the library board anymore. Really? What has happened with the two new board members, and why I listed all of those conservatives, is what we hoped would happen, and what happens. You said that this is a diverse community, and it is. This is a community of conservatives. This is a community of liberals, and this is a community of moderates. The library board reflects this community. As such, it's not unusual that a majority of the members are conservative. What we've seen with Aaron Salt and Aaron Benz is what we have seen countless times in the past, is that when people join the library board, and see the work that we do, and are introduced to the values of librarianship, they embrace them. And they realize that those values do not just protect the views other than their own, but they protect theirs as well. We have no indication that Aaron Salt or Aaron Benz will censor materials. None. They had an opportunity. They didn't take it. I can understand why this conversation is happening tonight. And I think it's a conversation that needs to happen in this community, but I don't think it should be relegated just to the library. I will say, it is disheartening as someone who has spent six years here, as a resident of Manitou, and the head of the library, to hear talk, even a whisper or a suggestion, that Manitou Springs would pull out of the Pike's Peak Library District. It is extremely disheartening when this library district has spent the past two years ensuring that we will have a presence in Manitou Springs. When we had to leave the Carnegie, and we had to leave the Carnegie, it was not a choice. We spent half a million dollars to keep a presence in this community, because that was an obligation and a promise we had made. And it's a promise we will stand by. So, I just ask that that is honored and respected, and that discussion of pulling out of the Pike's Peak Library District, at least acknowledge the work that we have done, and the promises that we have made to the residents of Manitou Springs, and the investment in Manitou Springs that we have made. The library district is going to survive two board members, no matter what their actions are. This district has fought for intellectual freedom for 60 years, under directors much better than me. And it's a fight that we will keep having, but it's not a fight that we're having to have right now. So, I will answer any questions that you have.
Council, questions, comments? Judith?
Thank you so much for taking the time to come and talk to us. I did try to zoom into that meeting, and was having a tremendous amount of difficulty hearing. But, you know, my concern, well, you know, you said you're very concerned for this community, and I'm very concerned as well, of the trends we're seeing, not only in this community, but nationwide. And there are things that have been happening, you know, in the United States since 2016, that I never thought in a million years that I would, I, I could fathom. And, and so here we are. My concern isn't so much those two board members either, or, you know, what's happening on some other of the school boards in, in this county. I'm seeing in other states the power of parental groups that are coming together. And, you know, just like in this community, you know, I obviously, earlier tonight, had, had an opinion, but I was overridden, and that's because we have a community where, you know, that happens. The, you know, the majority in this community, the voice has spoken. So, we have a lot of communities across the nation where parental groups are coming together and saying, well, we, in, in the spirit of parental rights, don't want to, we want to censure what is age-appropriate for our children with regards to learning about gay, lesbian, transgender, bisexual issues, all of these issues that, so, you know, it, I'm more concerned about a community coming together and coalescing, and really putting tremendous pressure on the library, PPLD, to, to make. So, could you speak to that?
So, I'll hearken back to something that happened in 2018. And that was when we had a group that did a drag queen storytime at the library, at the Penrose Library. Drag Queen Storytimes have happened throughout the country, and they are programs that I personally think are incredible. They introduce children to the idea that it is okay to be different, and that it is okay to not be like everyone else. Traditionally, the parents that bring their children, those are ones who might have children who are non-binary, or are LGBT, or are transgender, or are very often, for instance, a, a, a gay or lesbian couple that have children of their own. When that program was announced, the Family Policy Alliance, which is a branch of Focus on the Family, traditionally, Focus on the Family has not intruded into the affairs of the Pike's Peak Library District. The Family Policy Alliance, however, raised an alarm, and there were emails that started coming in to city council and the Board of County Commissioners, hundreds of them. And I was called on the carpet by many of the elected officials in El Paso County. The outpouring from the community, though, when we had that, and I'm gonna... Were you there that day, Michael? Yep. I was actually in Malaysia, just trying to get home for this. But I was kept apprised of what was happening. And we had, I think, around 300 or 400 community members show up in support of that program, and we had two protesters. The program actually had to be repeated that day, and then the program continued. Whenever there has been challenges, and I applaud your concern, and it's a concern that I share on a nationwide basis. What I can say, in the times that intellectual freedom has been challenged at the Pike's Peak Library District, is the response from the community has not been one of support. It has, of the challenge, it has been support of the library district. And the events of that day actually led several city councillors to attend the next drag queen storytime. Councilmember Murray actually came to one, brought his wife, and became quite a fan, actually. But those programs continued. Challenges to intellectual freedom are nothing new. They go through swings. You can see this in the statistics that we collect at the library. In the past 40 years, we've had over 300 challenges. Half of those happened in the 90s. Half of them happened in one decade. We are starting to see challenges again. But the challenges that we're seeing very often don't actually elevate all the way to a formal challenge. We have conversations with people, and those conversations are usually fruitful. But there, the point of all of this is that this has happened before, as recently as four years ago. And the response was one of outrage, not at the library district, but at those who would tell the library district what is and what is not appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councillor? Comments, questions? Okay. We have, there are other individuals in the, in the audience who might have a perspective on, on this. I don't know how long we need to take this. And Natalie, you had attended the meeting. Judith, you had, and I think Nancy, or you didn't, okay, I'm sorry. So, I don't know if other council members want to share your insights from the, the meeting or your perspective?
What meeting, John?
I'm sorry. This was, I believe it was the PPLD Library Board meeting?
The trustees.
I, I was out of town, but Natalie, could, could you...
I mean, it is, I mean, obviously, I mean, John Spears was in the room, so it was, you know, basically what he said, that, you know, no one contested. When it was presented, I think there was a question about having a redlined version to review next time, and that was like the extent of the controversy, and was unanimously approved. And I, I do feel hopeful, based on what you've said, and basically what I'm hearing in the community as well, that we have become complacent, and now we're aware and activated. And I do anticipate and hope that we come together as a community on all levels, and swing back and work so that we don't lose more than we have as a nation. And, and again, I do share concerns about the county as well, and I do intend to continue to work on that big-picture piece, to make sure that, that we stay on the right path. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Julie, do you have comments?
No, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Nancy?
Yeah, I just wanted to first of all thank Mr. Spears. I think that that was very, very helpful. And I would say that, you know, every survey indicates that Americans will not ultimately tolerate censure. And I think we go along, or, you know, it does take something to knock us out of our, you know, we become comfortable, things are going okay, don't need to worry about it, and then things start going off the rails, and then people start worrying and getting active. And I think as a community, that would be what I would like to pursue, is we can go to those board meetings and use the time, the public comment time, to address our concerns. It doesn't have to be others who take the microphone all the time. We can help create that message as well. We can, you know, advocate for people that we are more comfortable with on the board. And I would, at this point, that is definitely what I would rather do, is to take those sorts of actions rather than to risk a lot of things by even discussing pulling out of PPLD. I have no interest, I have no real interest at this point, and hopefully in the future, of ever doing that. So thank you again for coming tonight and talking with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Michelle?
I just want to thank you for being here tonight and for clarification. And I know I had a knee-jerk reaction, and, you know, I'm new to city council and all the things, and I'm learning a lot. And so, thank you.
Thank you. May I--
Yes, sir, please.
I want to actually thank councilmember Wolf for bringing up the Gazette article because I do stand by what I said in there. I do. And it has, if nothing else, brought attention, at least as it relates to those issues with the library board. I wish it had not taken my departure to bring that attention to the library board. But it has definitely awakened people as to what the dangers are. But I stand by the fact that I do not think that the library district is in danger. The library district is stronger than censorship. This is a library district in Colorado Springs with everything that that entails. And it has survived challenges in the past. It will survive challenges in the future. My partner and I just don't want to be here anymore.
I don't blame you. Can I just say thank you also, not only for coming tonight, but especially for your service and your contributions to the PPLD. It's been fabulous, and I do appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
And, yes, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. Well, those were the two discussion items we had tonight. We will have a couple of routine reports. I was wondering if we'd like to take a short break, and anyone who'd like to leave would be able to do so. Let's take a five-minute break. Okay, we just took a couple of more or less housekeeping things to take care of. Received your act on council correspondence. Does anybody have anything? Okay. Alrighty. Okay, I guess I will mention, I've been appointed to the Front Range Rail Commission.
Front Range what?
The Front Range Passenger Rail Commission.
Oh, I thought you said reel, like R-E-A-L.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, rail.
So I'm gonna come wearing an engineer's hat and a red kerchief one of these nights.
Oh, you'll be so cute.
Well, thank you. That might improve things. So that's the spinoff from PPACG, but anyway, that'll take a little bit of time. So anyway, I'll mention that. We might have some interesting information based on that.
Does that, can I ask you a follow-up?
Sure, yeah.
Does that mean, like, in terms of the potential transportation between here and Denver that's being talked about?
Yes, absolutely. Be the entire Front Range. And actually, I think the vision is from Lamar and Trinidad up to Cheyenne, Wyoming eventually, but primarily, I mean, Colorado Springs to Fort Collins is the big leg and Pueblo to Colorado Springs. So there's, you know, it's many, many years worth of work, but anyway, I got onto that. So, and I'm hoping there'll be some good things for Manitou on that because Amtrak wants to extend their service from Lamar and Trinidad up to Denver, and so we would have some, that might have some effect on our, you know, bringing it to us. Probably not a whole lot, but it would give people an alternative besides driving. Okay, so that's my little piece. Anything else? Okay, great. Denise?
Okay, I have several dates that I just want to announce. So let me talk. March 30th, Hiwatha in person, 6:00 p.m., here at Memorial Hall. So March 30th, 6:00 p.m., Hiwatha in person. March 31st, 6:00 p.m., Manny Awards here, and you've got RSVP, so please get online and RSVP for that. You should have received the invite. So that's Manny Awards, March 31st, 6:00 p.m., here. Coffee with the school resource officer is April 6th at 8:00 a.m. at Red Dog. So that's April 6th, 8:00 a.m. at Red Dog with the school resource officer. The Creek Walk Trail just did a virtual public information room, has, was just launched. So the details, the history, the next steps of the Creek Walk, of the project, and you can view it on the city website. So I encourage all of you to go to the city website to look at that. Some other dates that are coming up, the Chipper Day is coming up on April 23rd for our community. So April 23rd is the Chipper Day. The Great American Cleanup is April 30th. Dumpster drop-off days, that's where we'll get two or three big dumpsters, and anybody in the community can come and put stuff in the dumpster drop-off day. That's May 14th. And then we'll have another Chipper Day on 9/24, so on September 24th. And then we'll have a Creek Week in September and October. We just don't have that date set yet, so that's to be determined. So I wanted to make sure I give you all those upcoming dates, and hopefully Jack can put them in the paper and talk about them during his article.
Great, thanks. That's our--
So, did we decide on the 21st of August for the strategic planning, mission and vision meeting?
Yes, that's Sunday, the 21st of August, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Denise?
And then I do want to just note, remember, Sunday, the 26th is the budget work session too, so you have that Sunday on your calendar. June 26th. I sent everybody invites, so you should have those on your calendar also. Okay? I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, that wraps it up. If there's no other, if we have no other comments, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody. I thought we had some pretty good discussions tonight.